Thursday, June the 13th, and a little bit of rain, but it's supposed to be a nice weekend. So, we're in that summer pattern now, I believe. We're going to rise for the pledge, and when we do, we'll ask if also you would join us. We're going to have a moment of silence. Certainly keep all of those in public safety, and those in our armed forces in your thoughts.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Priority Carol, we've got a young lady with us this morning, but before we do that, I'll scoot down amongst the four of us to see if we have anything you want to...
I got a couple of quick things.
Sure.
One, again, publicly appreciation to our team, our staff putting together the education forum we had the other night. Again, I believe in that listen, learn, lead approach, and it gave us an opportunity to listen to some experts, to learn from what they had to share from our community as we continue to listen, learn from them in making decisions regarding our government. But kudos to our team in packaging that together, along with the community college for hosting it at the venue. Second is a early happy birthday to our US Army. In 1775, on June 14th, it was created, so we're going through a birthday. It's also Flag Day for our country. So tomorrow is the Army Birthday and Flag Day. And then last, just wishing everyone that celebrates a very happy Father's Day to my colleagues and those that are out there on Sunday. So, Happy Father's Day to y'all.
Thank you.
You're not our son.
Come here, Dad.
I'm getting out of the way.
He wants to be, but he doesn't.
Keep going, keep going.
Okay. If I may, first of all, I just want to, and I guess to the Carroll County Times, kudos for the Neighborhood Section for the seven Eagle Scouts that were awarded from the one troop. And you did publish that, and I guess it goes back to the fact that we have a lot of young people doing a lot of good things. Eagle Scouts, I've attended many of them, and one I just attended Saturday, Joseph Shavakow, at Emory United Methodist Church with Troop 9, is the 72nd, I think, Eagle Scout from that troop. And it's unbelievable, but, you know, I've handed brochures, like I just did here to our new reporter, and it never gets into paper. But, you know, if he'd have done something criminal, he'd be on the front page. But doing something right, we need to recognize what young people are doing in a positive form. We get so much negativity, so I hope this goes through, but I just wanted to recognize him for what he did. And he started a whole upgrade at Charlotte's Quest in Manchester, doing the nature center there, revitalizing it, and now he has a whole group of future Eagle Scouts working to continue along that. So, I just want to say thank you, and I hope we can get some positive publicity for that. And we're going to have some positive publicity here in a few minutes for another young lady who did something outstanding. So, I think we want to keep this as positive as we can, and let people know what the young people are capable of.
I'd like to reiterate Commissioner Ralstein's comments about the educational forum on Tuesday night. It was originally Commissioner Ralstein's idea to do that educational forum, and he was spot-on. I think key is education. I appreciate what the college did hosting it. I appreciate our staff putting that event together. It took a lot to pull it together. It was very successful. Also like to show my appreciation to the press for covering it and participating in this education process that we as a board are going through, and also our constituents. Also remind people that throughout the summer, it is the carnival season for our fire department, so make sure you go out there and you patronize your carnivals at your local fire department, and even the ones that aren't your local fire departments. Due to circuit, some people try to catch all the fire departments, so make that a goal and support all your fire departments. So, thank you very much.
Tony Towns this week.
There you go.
Sykesville starts.
And Sykesville starts Saturday, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Just a few things for me. I'd like to say a big thank you to those that were responsible for food trucks Sunday at the Farm Museum. What a fantastic event, and the weather held out. There were estimated about 5,000 people that came through there. As a matter of fact, several of the food trucks ran out of food, which is not a good thing if you're a food truck, but is a good thing if you look at it on the other side. So, kudos to all that were responsible for that. I know Bonnie, Bonnie Staub, is instrumental in putting a lot of those things together, and certainly Jack Liverin.
Joanne Went.
Joanne Went, and gonna miss somebody, but anyway, thank you for everybody that did that. We had a highway safety seminar yesterday here in Carroll, very well attended, and they're coming up with a highway safety plan here for us that I think is long overdue. I talked to Chris Litznotzen.
Let Notchen.
Always have trouble with Chris's name. Was primary on that, and I want to thank him, and it was a good event. And I talked to him yesterday afternoon late, and he said they're well on their way to come up with a good plan. So, a lot of great ideas in that room, so I want to thank everyone that attended there. A little bit on that theme, yesterday we were all a little bit surprised, I guess, when our president of the Volunteer Emergency Services Association walked into the room. As most of you know, Don Fair had a fight with a chainsaw on a tree in which he lost, but he ultimately has won now, and that's as a result of shock trauma. As we watch, listen, and see what's going on with the UMMS system, I want to remind folks that shock trauma is unlike anything in the world, and we are so lucky to live in the area that we do. Don looks phenomenal, just three weeks out from being treated at shock trauma. So, I want to say kudos to everyone that's involved there. I was at their board meeting on Tuesday. Certainly, there's been a little ton of negative press, but I want to remind folks, shock trauma is sort of over here on its own branch, and we continue to be blessed to have them in everything that they do. From the initial EMS response in Lineboro to that golden hour that you always hear about, it's remarkable that Don is where he is. So, just want to make sure everybody knows that. Cape Horn Bridge is open.
That's good news.
Yay!
That's been closed for how long, Dick?
Six months.
At least, I think. Doug, is that what it is?
Oh, it's been longer, yeah. It was open since the year.
Yeah.
It's been a while. Yeah, we ran a little behind due to the rain and the bog turtles.
Right.
Rain and bog.
Lot of detours.
Yeah. The bog turtles were actually out there with bars of soap one night, over there, in the rain. Bog turtles, you gotta love them. Anyway, that's open. We did a press release on that, but I want to remind folks that you can roll right through that area now, so that's huge.
And that was a good project, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, well done on everybody there, too. So, thank you. I want to remind folks on the highway safety thing, it is summertime, Commissioner Boucher mentioned that, brings a whole different aspect of outdoor activities. I want to remind folks to be mindful and be aware of your surroundings and be careful on our roads. It's always a challenge, and it's not only about distracted driving and all the other things that go, it's about everything else that we see. I pulled up, and I shared this yesterday, I pulled up to the light at Angler and 140 the other day and looked over, as I typically do, and the young lady in the car next to me was brushing her hair, reading the paper, and looking at her phone. I've got a thing on my desk that says, "Really?" I wish I'd have had it with me. So, please, if it's that important, pull over, but let's be safe in all of our summer activities. On your theme, Commissioner Weaver, we do have a young lady with us today, and her parents, and also her instructor at the Career Tech Center, Mr. Hutchinson, we're glad to have all of you here. Brittany is... Brittany, why don't you come up? And then I'll let you introduce everybody, I'll let you introduce your parents. But, yeah, right there's fine, unless you want to come up and sit down, you can come up and sit down, too, if you want. We can put you on, we can put you on right on the hot seat.
Here, come sit down.
Yeah.
How about her parents on each side of her?
So, yeah, Mom and Dad, why don't you come up as well? So, Brittany is a rising senior at the California University of Pennsylvania. She's also a Winters High School alum. And Brittany has done something that is unlike what we've seen lately here, and I wanted, I wanted to recognize her today because of her expertise in print media, she is going to the World Skills Competition in Russia in August. And that is quite the accomplishment, young lady, and we are very proud of you. So, and behind every fantastic student are good parents as well. So, you introduced Mom and Dad, and then just give us a little brief synopsis of what, where you're at and where you're going.
Okay. So, this is my mother, Cindy Whitestone, and this is my father, Ken Whitestone. So, with this competition, I originally competed at a national competition in Louisville, Kentucky, where I received a gold medal at the high school level. And then I went back and competed again at the college level, and ended up receiving first place again. So then I had the opportunity to apply for the World Skills Competition, where it would be working on offset presses for this competition. We had to compete against another student, they selected two students, and we had to compete again in Louisville, Kentucky, at a head-to-head competition to decide who would represent the United States. And thankfully, I was selected, and now I'll be representing America at the competition in Russia.
Wow, that's incredible.
That is unbelievable.
So, you're going to what part of Russia again?
Kazan.
Kazan, yeah. And for how long, how long's the...
It's about two weeks.
Okay. What a remarkable opportunity. We'd also like to recognize David Hutchinson. David, you need to come up as well, and, but I'll let you stay at that mic for one minute. Then we're going to get you up front. But we want to also thank you, because we have a tremendous, a tremendous group of teachers in Carroll County that do a remarkable job with their young people. And you are, you sir, are the perfect example of that. So, thank you, and we appreciate what you accomplished.
This is Career Tech Center.
Yep.
We just have a couple of words.
Yeah, so I'll let you say a few words about that.
Well, originally, when I was talking with Brittany, she was planning to tell her story. Her story is exceptional. She started off just, I've known her for four years now, five years now. And so she came to my class, very quiet, and I noticed right off the bat that she was interested in, you know, technical aspects of design and production, basically because she was getting angry at the equipment.
Not the instructor, the equipment, right? Okay, just want to make sure.
And, yeah, she gets angry at me. But I know that she was very passionate about it, because she wanted to get it right. She wanted to do it with craftsmanship and skill. And so everything that she's ever done since that point has been that level of passion and, you know, application. She really takes it to the next level. And she didn't, she told you what college she goes to, but the college she went to before was in Florida, and she transferred from there, from Florida, okay, to Central PA in the mountains, okay, in the cold, moved from Florida to there, because she was that passionate about what she wanted to do.
We got it. Good point.
Pretty amazing. But ever since that, she's not only been advancing her own career, but she's been a model for a lot of young people who are entering the career. They support, she supports the students at the tech center now. She helps train them for future competitions. She works with national committees on helping students from all of the United States, you know, prepare for competition. And now, of course, being part of this international field, she eventually wants to support the World Skills Organization by advising them. So, she's got quite a career ahead of her, and she makes all of us look wonderful. So, we just, I just wanted to thank her for that.
Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate that. And Brittany, I hope folks focused on the fact that you're representing not just Carroll, not just the state of Maryland, but the United States, which is remarkable. So, congratulations, and very well done, young lady, and to the parents, very well done as well. So, thank you all very much. We're going to get a photo off up here. So, anything else, Mom, Dad, anything? Just, I know you're proud, so. Scoot on in, get nice and close. I'll ask you to look at my camera first, and then I'll let you take a picture then. Thank you. Congratulations, good luck.
I think you've already been in the paper. Okay, thank you, congrats.
And this will be on all of our social media as well. All right, once again, once again, that's awesome, and thank you all very much. Have a great summer and safe travels. Yep.
I said we want to see pictures, but I got...
Oh, yeah, take photos. Yep, okay.
That's a testament to the quality of our career in Technology Center.
Yep, it is. Okay, with that, the first item on our agenda is a briefing by BGE, Ms. Megan Eves. Top that, Eves.
The gauntlet has been thrown down.
Fortunately, I don't have any championships or awards or anything behind my name.
Good morning.
Good morning, County Administrator, County Commissioners, thank you for having us this morning. Again, good morning, Megan Eves, External Affairs Manager with BGE, thank you for having us this morning, just wanted to quickly give you an update about BG, if you're not familiar, BG is the leading gas and electric provider in Maryland. I'm going to provide you some real-time stats here for Carroll County. In Carroll County, we have 60,000 electric customers and approximately 16,000 gas customers, and we also have 426 employees that work for BG that live here in Carroll County. BG is a 203-year-old company.
I apologize, Megan, how many employees live in Carroll?
426.
426 BG employees live in Carroll?
That live in Carroll County.
Okay.
We do.
My neighbor's on the gas, on the gas side, and he stops at my driveway and lights up the truck, and we talk about stuff all the time.
Good, I'm glad to hear it.
Yeah, so, you know, we don't even have any gas out there in the nice rural area, but we talk about stuff. Oh, 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 yeah, we talk about that, yeah.
I, I do want to talk about that, too, that's more on a personal note.
Okay, thanks very much, okay, next on our.
But I also today, I want to talk a little bit more than BG, because we're more than just pipes and wires, and I kind of want to talk about some fun stuff that we're doing in the community, because we're doing a lot of great things. So I want to provide a little bit of, some updates and opportunities about grants available here in Carroll County. Couple months ago, we had a emergency response and safety grants reception, Commissioner Wance, thank you for joining us, we had eight recipients of grants from Carroll County, I'm sure you recognize some of those familiar faces, just a couple of the grants to mention, Change of Westminster was awarded a grant, so is the Carroll Community College Foundation, and also the Westminster Fire Department, I'm doing a lot, a lot of good stuff with that, and Commissioner Wance, I can't thank you enough for your support in really pushing those grants throughout a lot of the local fire departments. And then also, we celebrated our Bright Idea Teacher Grants not so long ago, Ms. Chaney from Runnymede Elementary School, she put in a grant for a very innovative technology for a smart projector for her classroom, our Bright Idea Teacher Grants really, we try to support STEM in the classroom, and we know that teachers are sometimes really stretched for resources, and we're trying to help them any way that we can. So we were, we were really excited about that, we had 37 grant recipients throughout all of our jurisdictions, and we're hoping to double that next year.
She learned everything from her father, by the way.
Moving on from that, I think, I heard it was her mother. Anyway, this is actually a picture from last week, I had the opportunity to spend some time with the Environmental Club from Elmer, Elmer Wolf Elementary School, their teachers put them to, put together a Wires Down Challenge, I, I won't try out for Carroll's Most Talent here today, and sing our little jingle of the Wires Down that you may remember from a few years ago. So our Wires Down Challenge, not today, maybe tomorrow. Anyway, we, we challenged elementary schools to talk about wire-down safety, and they put together a little video, and they submit it, and Elmer Wolf actually won the $1,000 Gem Award, and I was pretty excited to hear just some of the great things that they're doing, a part of their club, I think they're having some pilot programs, how to be more sustainable with their trays, and they're doing a lot of great things with their little parks and stuff outside of the school, so it was really good to hear how excited they were, and what they're going to do with that $1,000 grant. And I have a pop quiz here for you this morning, who knows what Mercaptin is? Anybody?
Oh, yeah, I do, but.
Go for it.
I should.
Let's see.
So, it's, it's, it's what's in propane?
Close.
Or gas.
Close, so Mercaptin is the agent that we put in natural gas, natural gas actually has no odor.
That was spot-on, don't, don't say "close."
It's close. But the, Mercaptin gives the rotten odor smell, so then you can protect, you can find a gas leak. So what we do is, we have the Captain Mercaptin, we created this superhero to try to do a little outreach and education in our elementary and middle schools. So every year, we have the Captain Mercaptin Gas Safety Hero Challenge, and this year, we had a comic strip where children were able to draw a little, a little caption, and we're really looking and hoping that you can help us this year, there's a, a big opportunity to have an award winner here in Carroll County, so it's, it's an opportunity coming up.
So what you're, what you're saying is you need to re-educate Commissioner Wance on Mercaptin, is what you're saying.
I was close, I'm mad, I thought I was spot-on. Hey, does anybody see the resemblance between Captain Mercaptin and Commissioner Fraser? Just, just saying.
Does the captain smell bad?
No.
But this is a school program, right?
This is a school program, yeah, for all, all elementary schools and middle schools.
And the schools can, if they win, they win money.
They can win up to $10,000 for the school.
Yeah.
So we, we need to encourage the Board of Education to participate in this, and encourage their teachers to participate.
And, and I would encourage my colleagues as well, and you touched on it a little bit, Megan, but, you know, these grant awards, these grants that are available through BGE, many times go untouched.
Yes.
So, you know, when you're out and about with the fire departments and everybody else, remind them to do that, because it is, it is such a great program. So, I, I remind them all the time, and I think we're getting a little bit more now interest in that, and lots of time, it's, it's because they just, they don't want to be bothered with filling out the paperwork, that's what it comes down to, but, man, it's so important to do that, so.
I personally benefited at the Winfield Volunteer Fire Department from two training programs that your, your agency sponsored for the fire department, so always advocate the citizens out there, when your local fire department is offering these programs, such as treating a bleeding wound or Narcan applications, please take advantage of it, that these programs are made available, thanks to BGE.
Thank you. And I know that we're working with the county to do some training as far as what to do with wires down, gas leaks, that kind of stuff, we're working on some training here within the county employees. Any, any additional questions, anything that I can help answer?
No, but thank you for the grants, and believe me, we're going to be looking at them much under a microscope in the future.
Great, thank you.
And with that, Doug?
Next item. Oh, thanks, Megan. So next is the BGE Public Access Electric Vehicle Charging Program, and our Deputy Director of Public Works, Doug Brown, and I'll let you do the utter, other introductions of who's here with you, Megan.
Cheers. Good morning, Doug.
Good morning, sir.
What, what font did you use, Brown, come on?
Well, we're all over 50.
Use your glasses font.
Even with the glasses, it's 445.
Sorry, Commissioners. Well, good morning, Commissioners, and this morning, before we get started again, you've already met Megan this morning, I'll let Kristy, if you'd like to introduce yourself in your position.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Kristy Fleishman Gronke, I am the Manager of Strategic Programs for BGE, and I'll be here to talk to you about BGE's Electric Vehicle Program today.
Great, thank you, and then, I'm Deputy Director with Department of Public Works. Commissioners, this morning, we're before you with some good news, I believe, and to brief you on the installation of public access electrical vehicle charging stations at county sites. As Kristy will go into, BG&E has plans throughout their territory to build, own, and operate a network of 500 public access EV charging stations, and we want to bring it to your attention, and hopefully gain your cooperation in adding some of these to the county. So without further ado, I'll let Kristy begin the presentation, and I'll operate the slides for you.
Perfect, thank you. Take them up to the first slide, so a little introduction of PC Order 88997, so it was a petition that was put together by BGE, PHI, and Potomac Edison to offer electric vehicle charging infrastructure in Maryland to help support the zero admissions goal that Maryland is a part of, which has a goal of reaching 300,000 EVs on the road by 2025. Right now, Maryland has roughly just over 20,000 EVs on the road, so we have a long way to go in the next five years from the 20,000 to the 300,000. So in support of that, we are launching programs to raise customer awareness, also incent charger installations at home and multifamily properties, as well as offer reliable public charging throughout BG's service territory. So an overview of what we're providing from an infrastructure investment, and I'll go into more details on each one on the next few slides, but we'll be offering rebates for residential customers, and then rebates for multi-unit properties to address apartments and condo dwellers that don't have access to their own parking spot to be able to charge their electric vehicles, and then provide utility-owned infrastructure in areas where the private market isn't meeting the demands of the electric vehicles, to help ease range anxiety, which is a common issue with early adopters of electric vehicles. We will also be providing a new EV-only time-of-use rate, so that will incentivize off-peak charging to help with any issues on our electric grid, we don't want all the electric vehicles coming home at 5:00 and plugging in and causing undue stress on our system. We'll also be providing a demand credit to our public installations to help them adapt to the new EV load that will be on their facility. And we're launching multiple customer awareness campaigns in the next few weeks to support our program launch. So more specifically, the residential charging, we'll be providing a $300 rebate for customers that purchase a home charger, so this would be installed either at, in a garage or on your property, where it would be a residential graded meter, we have 1,000 rebates at this time to pay out. This program launches on July 1st, and customers can apply for the rebate on bg.com/electricvehicles. The next slide is the multifamily program, so this one's a little bit higher dollar value as those chargers and installations are more costly, so we'll be providing a $5,000 rebate for Level 2 chargers, which is a 240-volt charge, and then up to $15,000 for a DC fast charge, so that's where it's about 50 KW charge, and you can get a full charge in about 20 to 30 minutes, for a maximum award of $25,000 per site. And this is similar to the residential program, where after the, the customer purchases and installs the charger, they just apply for the rebate on bg.com. And then the focus really of our presentation today is the EV Charging Utility-Owned Network, so this is for government sites specifically, BG will be installing 500 stations throughout our service territory, the government sites will apply with BG, just with the, the location address of where they'd like the chargers, how many they'd like, and approximately where in the parking lot they would like those chargers installed. This is no cost to the government site, BG completely maintains, operates, and everything that may go wrong with the electric vehicle charger is BG's responsibility, the only thing the government site must provide is an easement to be able to access the chargers to maintain them properly. One last note on there, so the, any electric vehicle driver that comes to these charging stations would be charged a rate to use the chargers, just like any other public charger out there, so electric vehicle drivers are used to this, you would have a smartphone app, when you pull up to the charging station, you initiate that charge session, and then you would be billed a market-based rate that's currently filed with the Maryland Public Service Commission for approval, and that's what customers would be charged for their consumption on those chargers.
I was wondering how that works, so you got to have a smartphone, you got to have an app in order to do it.
That's how most people do it, but we will also have a 1-800 number listed on the charger, so if you didn't have the app or didn't want the app, you can call that number and provide them a credit card number. So this map was provided by Doug with some different highlighted areas of where we're looking to potentially put chargers in Carroll County.
So we have, at this point, and I did, it's a good, good time to bring it up, so obviously, as, as you all know, BGE does not cover the entire Carroll County District, so I did want to let you know that what you're seeing up here covers two sites each in our proposal for District 2, District 3, and District 5. However, we have already begun conversations with Potomac Edison for District 1 and District 4, but I will tell you, they're about a couple months behind from where BGE is, so at the point that they're ready, we would come back at, in front of you with their representative, and again, do a briefing over there. But I would say that we are actually, we have such a good relationship with Megan and our folks at BGE, Kristy and others, that if you all support this, we could in fact be the first jurisdiction in Maryland to, to get these in from, from BGE, so that's kind of where we're at. But again, this map shows a couple of sites in District 2, two in District 3, and two in District 5, these are county-owned sites, and particularly, we look at things like the libraries, senior centers, and areas that have 24/7 access, and additionally, here at the County Government Office Building. So that, for example, someone could come here to the government hub, they may have some time to go to the courthouse, they may go to the Board of Ed, anywhere else, we'll have a fast charger here, they could do their business, it might take them 15, 20 minutes, and have a full charge to go somewhere else, sitting right here at the county government house. So that's, that's the map.
What does a charging station cost for, say, a private person to put it in somewhere?
So it depends on.
Or a business owner to put it in.
Yeah, so it depends on, so for Level 2, there's two different types, DC fast chargers are far more expensive, the average piece of equipment alone for a DC fast charger is about $30,000, and then depending on where the, the electric service is and where you need to run it to, that could increase the cost quite significantly from there. Level 2 chargers are about $3,000, so a lot less expensive, and then that would also, any additional cost to run the service would add up.
But those grants are available to help offset that for.
For multi, multi-unit dwellings, for this program specifically, BG covers all the costs, there's no cost to the government sites.
So for me, I mean, this is great, and, you know, sometimes we say, "Just because you can't doesn't mean you should," but in this case, we can and we should, and being a first in the community is a good thing. So I, I appreciate the intent of getting our cooperation, the biggest concern beyond the cooperation is to ensure that we get the advocacy from the community to do this, and highlight the benefits of doing this, that's the next step. I mean, the cooperation, putting something in place is nice, but if you start getting weeds growing around the, the thing, it becomes a blight, and we don't want that. So how do we go from now, today's step is getting the cooperation which you're asking for, but then coming up with a business plan or a marketing plan to get the advocacy, so we can continue to highlight and share the potential uses of these and the value in using these. So I, that's, that's the challenge to the next step.
Sure.
You know, so.
So for BG specifically, we will be offering a ton of information on our, on our website to say where you can find BG chargers, one issue with public charging today is exactly that point, that's where, when they are installed, they're not often maintained, so an EV driver will go, you know, a certain distance to get to a charger, and then find that it's not operational. BG is being held to the same reliability standards as our electric distribution system, so they must be operational at all times, so based on the amount of customer awareness and marketing that BG plans to do, customers will have the sense of ease that they can go to a BG charger, and that it will be working and, and operational.
Further with that is that we found in our discussions over the last few months, particularly since we happen to have an EV owner who has sat with us to discuss, that those folks are very educated about their own charging stations, that many of them do their homework, all of them do, before they buy that car, to see where they can charge, what they can do, and we feel that the BG reliability, so most of them now are, as Kristy mentioned, are held privately, they may or may not be serviced, but they're going to be held to the same standard as your household or our business, which means people will know the reliability of those units, and then we'll, of course, market them, and we can market them on our government website, to say that we are EV charge-friendly in Carroll County Government, and, you know, I'm sure that Chris would put something on there, as he does with everything else, which is that consumer awareness to, to get folks where they need to be.
Potential, we have 500 units coming into the BG&E area.
Yes.
Potential for Carroll County is, how many?
Roughly 50.
Yeah.
So this is just the start, I, I mean, I've already got, you said there's nothing in one, but I've got a pretty good spot in one that I think would be acceptable.
Well, the only thing, we, we would, we could potentially have other sites.
Okay.
The issue is, is that the sites that we place these at need to have 24/7, 365 access in order for them to be good for the consumer. We have run into the fact, and again, this would, this is certainly for further discussion, and the, the six sites that we've initially located have that. We would have other potential sites, however, some of our parks, which we believe would be good sites, are either signed that you're not allowed in there after dusk, or they're gated in a couple of cases. Particularly our, you know, we, we had initially looked at our parks, and I believe what, what you've said, we've also looked at, for example, potentially the community center or other locations, but we have to make sure we can allow that 24/7 access, which is why we made the first swipe with these six.
Yeah, and I, that's fine. I, I understand that.
Yep.
But I'll also take it a step further and say, I don't know that anybody that's driving these things would go in at 2:00 in the morning to charge their car. They're going to do it when they come there for an event.
Yes.
So I, I'd, I'd challenge you to think outside the box a little bit. The sports complex is the perfect spot, Camp Hashua, Bear Branch, and then the future Charles Carroll Community Center would be a, a site too for 1.
Absolutely.
Because I know a lot of the rest of my district is PNE.
Yeah.
So...
And we can remember that in addition to the 50 sites that Christie mentioned, we also will have other sites available to finish off that.
Okay.
That, that is not inclusive of whatever Potomac Edison can bring to it. But I will tell you that we already have had those discussions.
Okay.
And we're continuing to look with BGE at what those options may be, just to make sure that the customers can use them.
Are there solar-powered charging systems?
Are there, or are these?
Are there.
They're, in, in California, they've been experimenting with stuff like that to, to provide like a parking pavilion, and on top of that, there is solar, and then that fuels the charging stations. Space in this, you know, in a lot of these situations could be an issue with putting in a whole solar canopy, and that isn't really part of what the specific order is with the commission to provide that. Joint installation of solar and a charging station, but I think it's definitely something that will evolve in the future.
I'm just curious.
Yep.
I applaud the work you're doing, and I understand that this is just the beginning of locations. This is not a final, and that's what you're moving towards. Commissioners, other locations should be identified, thinking outside the box, thinking of opportunities where these stations would be most advantageous for our community, so...
And we would certainly like to hear that, commissioners.
Yep.
And apologize to interrupt, but for any of you that have sites that you think would be advantageous, definitely get me an email, and we'll pull those sites up and see what we can do with them.
Yeah, so you already got mine.
Yes, sir.
There's a ton of traffic in that sports complex.
That's a great one.
Again, I understand the 24/7 access, but I would take it a step further. And again, reiterate that, that no one's going to go to the sports complex at midnight to charge their car. They're going to do it when they're there for an event.
Right.
So I'd, I'd, I'd challenge you to maybe look away from that 24/7 access thing.
Yeah, that, that was something that the Maryland Public Service Commission had, had put in, in the order, and I think it's not so much that they would be, so if you needed a charge and you knew based on BG's reliability, even though the sports complex is closed, as long as you could go there and get the charge that you need, that, that's the point.
Yeah, I get it.
So as long as it's not gated where you cannot access the charger at all, that, that's the issue.
You know, with the, again, excitement that Carroll County, again, leads the way in these type of opportunities, this is good news, and I'd like to make the motion that the board of commissioners authorize the Department of Public Works to apply for EV charging stations with BGE.
Okay, second, you got a couple more you want to just hit before we...
Yeah, we can go to the next step.
The next step is...
We'll keep that on the table, but, but finish your presentation. That's fine.
So we'll begin accepting applications July 1st, so we're just getting out in front, letting the different counties in our territory know of this program, so you can start doing internal planning and approvals. So all of the work that we've done with Doug so far to identify sites has been helpful. We circulate, circulate that through our new business team to help pre-plan for when our program officially launches on July 1st. The application will be made available shortly, and the government sites will submit that those couple pieces of information, I identified the address, the number of chargers and things like that on bg.com starting July 1st. And this just recaps the, the benefits of, of the order, so, you know, providing that infrastructure to help increase EV adoption, to help Maryland meet the zero admissions goal of 2025.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions or comments for, for these fine folks?
Are there apps for people to find the locations?
Yes.
And it lists like the time, say, we put them in parks, would it notify them that like they can't access it because the park's closed?
So the...
I just wanted to really quickly get, most of our parks, the only thing that is up there is for those law-abiding citizens that watch the signs. It just simply says, "No entry after dusk," you know, or something like that. We really have very few that are gated, so I think we can get beyond most of those other parks, as long as the access is available and they're not gated, and we can certainly look at creative ways to get in those parks that, that are.
I was just wondering to say, so, and so it's all, there's a location at a park, and they go there at 10:00 at night, and it's gated, and they're low, and they go...
Yeah.
Right. And that's the key. That's, that's what we're going to get.
Okay.
But we, we certainly, again, I think we can be out, we have worked with both Director Degetz, I had a brief discussion with him, and also with our Director of Carroll County Public Libraries, and then with our internal staff. So we're going to work with all our partners to make sure that, that everybody's on board and good with any, any location.
Thank you.
Well, that's the beauty of the sports complex, which I continue to advocate for, because it, they're typically there till 11:00 at night.
Right.
Especially during the summer months.
So the sports complex would be a good site, then you'd say?
Yeah, it's kind of, we, we all, we refer to it as the field of dreams, because, you know, the lights are on up there till, you know, anyway. So, all right, I got a motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Appreciate the hard work.
And thank you, BGE. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What you're doing.
Okay. Next on the agenda is third quarter budget update and request for transfer of funds from our Department of Management and Budget. Hi, Deb. How are you? Great. Have you seen Ted?
Good morning, Deb.
All right. Well, it says third quarter update. It's a little, a little bit more than that. Now, in one sense, we were, we come in with an update, we're looking back to the end of the last quarter, which would have been, what, June, end of March. Obviously, we're well beyond the end of March. So we're going to be talking more really about what we see for the end of the year, although we still don't have all the information for the end of the year, and then about some ideas that will carry on into future years. So looking ahead to the end of fiscal year 19, which is just a few weeks away, as things stand, we see revenues coming in about $800,000 less than we budgeted. And we're going to talk about this more in just a minute. And expenditures coming in about $7.5 million less than what we budgeted. So revenues, revenues under budget is a bad thing, expenditures under budget is a good thing. The combination there would be about $6.7 million that we would walk away with at the end of the year. Now, there's already 3.9 planned for fiscal year '21. That's that 1% that we always build into our plans. So you take that away from the 6.7, that would leave us with $2.8 million that we would expect with what we know today to be available for future commissioner decisions. Now, back to the, the revenues. The biggest question mark, as usual, is income tax. We got the beginning of our last major distribution, the first, no, that's not right, it was our third distribution. Yeah, right, we got our third distribution. So we're about three-quarters of the way through the year. The rest of our income tax, what we think of as our last fourth quarter distribution actually comes in in several pieces, so it takes longer for us to see it than, than the others. But the most recent distribution was, again, a disappointment, 1.5% growth over the same distribution last year. This follows now our first, first distribution, what we got for not reconciling distributions, but, you know, that what's happening today kind of thing, was 5% growth. The second one was minus 3.5%, and now this third one was a positive 1.5%. So even if you'd never heard me talk about the difficulties of projecting where we're going with the income tax, with just that information, you can see what a pain this is trying to figure out where you're going. You know, plus 5, minus 3.5, plus 1.5. What is the next distribution? And I, I don't have the answer to that. But if it comes in as budgeted, we would end the year $1.4 million behind budget for the, for the whole year. And right now, I can't tell you with any confidence that it is going to come in as, as budgeted for the rest of the year. Now, that doesn't mean it won't, doesn't mean it can't, doesn't mean that we might not see more than, than we budgeted. That remains a possibility. But it's also a possibility that we will get another 1.5% growth and end up more than $1.4 million behind. So, you know, and also on income tax, you know, last year, our basic major distributions, I wouldn't call strong, but were, were pretty good. What hurt us last year was the reconciling distributions, the results of previous years. This year, we're kind of flipped around. The reconciling distributions are propping up major distributions that are less than what we've, we've counted on. And of course, when we're talking about income tax, the big question still on everybody's mind is, what about the federal tax changes and what that's going to mean for us? What I can tell you is, right now, we haven't seen anything. There's, there's no noticeable impact to us. That still doesn't mean that that impact isn't coming. But you might remember, some of you might remember, about a year ago this time, there was some interest in upping our revenue projections in anticipation of that money coming. So we're sitting here a year later, and it, and it hasn't come. So I'm still not in a position to tell you it's not happening, and the logic still seems to make sense. Changes at the federal level had this impact on state taxes, which should have this impact on local income tax. I don't, I don't have any argument why that doesn't make sense, but still hasn't gotten here. The, the, the money is not flowing in, in any way that looks attributable to those changes. Now, even looking ahead, if that money does start increasing our revenues, a difficulty we're going to face is it doesn't come labeled with, here's a dollar because of the federal tax changes. So there could be things that are happening over here in a negative way and positive because of the tax changes. All we see is, is the net, how many dollars are, are coming in. So it, it will remain difficult to know exactly what that has meant to us until some years from now, when we can look back at historical data. Recredation is also a bit of a concern. We're figuring right now, we're going to end the year about $500,000 below what we budgeted. We went through probably four years of recredation revenue climbing as we got past the worst of, of the recession. The last two years now have not been, been climbing, and actually, one year was down a bit and then up again, but, you know, we're starting to think, you know, maybe we've kind of leveled out where we're going to be. This is something, you know, we've been talking about. How high are we going to go? Where does this start to, to level out? Now, it's starting to look like maybe we're getting the answer to that question. And then, income on our investments. We were seeing interest rates rising, which then flows into more revenue for us. We had started to think we saw what was developing to be a series of moves every years that would take us back to what we would typically think of as normal interest rates. That slowed down. We saw things kind of level out, and now, more recently, we've heard some discussion at the Federal Reserve level about maybe them decreasing rates. Now, it's not a nice, neat correspondence, what they do and where we end up, but it certainly is an indicator of, you know, what our expectations could be. So we are probably going to see our expectations for investment income, we're going to have to back off of those. Now, of course, none of this talks about property tax revenue, which is our biggest one. We haven't seen any additional negative information there. And it's too early for us to try and tell you what we think about '21 through '25. But given what we're looking at now, it's not hard for me to think that a year from now, we're going to have to come back again and say, the revenue expectations that we've, we've built into the plan are, are too high. Again, too early to say that. I'm just, it's just kind of a putting the thought out there so that when we do come back further down the road, it's not the first time you're hearing that we have concerns So I, I think that pretty much is what I wanted to leave you with, you know, kind of where we are and what that might mean for the future, unless there's something you'd like me to go into a little deeper.
Any questions for Ted? What's the, what's the timeline, Ted, on this last part of the income tax? Do we know?
The last piece doesn't come in until early August.
End of August.
End of August.
August 31st.
Such lovely timing. I remember that from years past. I just wanted to, you know...
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's difficult, because not only have you adopted the budget for next year based on revenue projections that we kind of need that information to, to, to make, we'll actually be two months into the next fiscal year before we've actually seen, seen the end of it all.
Okay. Well, we'll wait with bated breath for August, so...
One, one more time about that, plus 5%, minus 3.5%, plus 1.5%?
Those were the, those were the first three big distributions of income tax for the year. And that's, as they, as they compare against the same distribution in the previous year.
Is there any, can you figure out any reason why it was such a spread from plus 5 to minus 1.5? I mean, 6.5% spread, it's pretty dramatic.
And it can, it can be worse than that. Has been worse than that sometimes. See, and this is the basic problem we have with, with income tax. Our only visibility is the money that's coming in.
Right.
The money comes in based on a formula the state determines every November, what share of the pot Carroll County is, is going to get. So as it's coming in, we, we don't know why things are changing. We don't know if it's the right number. In fact, we know it's not the right number. That's what the reconciling distributions are for, to say, once, it's not just withholdings and estimated payments coming to the state, but it's tax returns, and they start to say, "Okay, Carroll County should be getting this much money." Then they start saying, "Well, you got too much, you got too little," until we eventually get to where it's supposed to be. Takes three fiscal years to get rid of one, one tax year. And while the state has a better picture statewide into what's, what's going on, there is no good picture into what happens county by county. And, and the basic problem is, we don't know who the money belongs to and to all the tax returns are in. This could be fixed. If the state is willing to say, everybody who is sending in taxes, you know, so Carroll County Government, or, or Walmart, or, you know, Maggie's Restaurant, you can't just send us withholdings. You have to tell us, this withholding is Deb Effingham's withholding, and she lives in Carroll County. Then we would have better information. But I think most people would say that's a, that would be a burdensome arrangement, and I don't see it as likely to happen. So we're, we're stuck with the system we have. It's always been a problem. It's become a bigger deal in recent years just because we have less flexibility than we did, so when it's off, it, it, it matters more. So we spend a lot of time agonizing over, well, why, why did it change? And sometimes, you know, it, it changes and you... And sometimes, you know, it, it changes and you, you struggle for even a possible reason. Well, what could have, what could have made this, make this change? And the other thing we struggle with is, you know, just the general feel, you know, unemployment is so low, you know, the economy, I mean, you can argue it's not consistent, but I mean, there's a lot of good things happening. You know, if I just asked somebody who knew nothing about how income tax comes into us, you know, how would you think we're doing? I think most people would say, oh, you guys ought to be doing good in income tax, but we're not. And it's not just Carroll County. This is, this is across the state. So I wish I had better answers for you, but I don't.
Is there a potential for a solution and reform legislation in the distribution?
No, as far as the distribution goes, you could come up with other ways of, of doing it. And, and the comptroller's office has been open historically to saying, could we, should we do this a different way? And there have been discussions over the years. The problem is nobody has a methodology that would be better. I mean, each one would come with its own, own problems because they're all built on this idea, money is coming in and you don't know who it belongs to. Yeah, so, well, actually, there is one way that would work very well. If the state didn't give us any of the money until after all the tax returns are in, the money they sent us, we would know is, is the right money. And once you were doing that, I guess that would be okay, but there would be a horrible disruption period.
A little lag period.
Yeah, so I don't see that happening either.
I was just wondering if there's talk amongst individuals in your position coming out and formulating some potential ideas.
Been, been talked about for years and, um, I think most of us agree, we don't like the system we have, but we don't know what a better one is.
I thought maybe you guys had this magic ball or you had a concept out there.
Nope. No, we don't. Okay, then, um, also connected with year end, I have two resolutions for you. For Commissioners Rothstein and Boucher, you have not been through this, but every year, we actually come to the commissioners after the fiscal year has ended to get a series of transfers approved. The reason we, we do that is because we can't fully close out the books until the year's over, so we have to come to you after the fact. Uh, we're going to bring a couple of things to you today, uh, that you can take care of, uh, so they won't be part of the pile of things that you see, uh, after the year's already closed. And, you know, just wanted to mention on this, there are, there are some things you will approve after the fact that could, in theory, have been done earlier in the year. But there are sometimes we choose not to ask you to make a transfer because we want to wait to see how the work, how the year is going to play out. You know, um, there might be a $10,000 unplanned expenditure, but some possibility that at the end of the year, $10,000 will be unspent and it's not necessary for you to make any transfer. But, um, we, we often find, you know, it's worth waiting on those things rather than, you know, trying to take care of everything as it comes up. Okay, so the first one I have for you is Resolution O-19.09. This is connected to OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. It's healthcare for retirees. This money was budgeted throughout the organization without knowing the actual costs that are going to be attributed to each piece of the organization. What we're doing now is with full information saying, here's all the changes we need to make in order to have, um, the budgets and the expenditures match up. The end result of this is zero, is a zero change to the total budget. It means nothing to the total picture. It's just making sure the right dollars are in this budget and this budget and, and this budget. Next year, uh, this won't be the same. In the FY '20 budget that you just adopted, we actually budgeted all this money in one place. We're going to wait until we get all the information we need to know how much goes to each budget and then come in to just do it all at once. So what I need then would be for you to approve this resolution to, um, make this series of changes.
I move the Board of County Commissioners approve the operating budget resolution O-19.09 to reappropriate OPEB to various operating budgets.
Second.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous on that one.
Thank you. The second one is Resolution C-19 dash, I, 19.18. There, you have a spreadsheet attached to this. This is actually, uh, 15 or so, uh, small capital transfers. Now, I'll tell you, there, there was a time when the Budget Office actually had the authority to make all but two of these transfers. I mean, basically saying, this is just an administrative, getting everything right, not a policy decision on what to do with money. We no longer have that authority, so we actually, we, we need to get your approval for this six cents transfer on our, one of our road projects.
I was wondering about that.
If at some point the commissioners wanted to reconsider that, we would definitely be in favor of some modest latitude on being able to, you know, just tie up loose ends. The first two, the six cents and the 19 cents are in connection with two road projects. The rest of them are the Wreck and Parks Self Help projects. We have projects that are completed and what this is doing is moving the money from those individual projects back to the self-help pot where at some point you will again be approving its use for some new projects.
So were these, um, over budget and it's going back to Parks, Wrecks Self Help?
Yes.
So what you're sharing? Like these projects are complete through self-help and this is the leftover money and it's going to go back into self-help?
Exactly.
Fantastic. Okay.
All right, I entertain a motion on that one.
I move the Carroll County Board of Commissioners approve the capital budget resolution C-19.18 to close capital projects.
Second.
I could maybe pave a road with that 25 cents.
Well, that's, you'd have to get the 19 and, the 19 cents and the 6 cents that way.
Yeah, right. Okay. Any, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Should have said four. Okay, uh, briefing discussion on Charles Carroll Community Center project amendment. Jeff Castigui and Eric Burdine. Gentlemen, good morning.
Morning Commissioners. So I'll give you a, a brief update on where the Charles Carroll Community Center project is currently. We've completed the schematic design phase and we're in the development design phase. As part of that phase, we had to generate what's called a traffic brief and submit it to the State Highway Administration. So we submitted it to State Highways and, uh, had a subsequent meeting with State Highways. And, um, in that meeting, they discussed with us their expectations for, the need for traffic improvements at the Charles Carroll Community Center entrance. So a couple of their improvements that they've asked us to do there is, uh, two warning signs coming from each direction, letting you know that there's a right turn or a left turn, whichever direction you're coming from. Additionally, they wanted supplemental plaques indicating that the Charles Carroll Community Center is, is, you're approaching the Charles Carroll Community Center. And the big one, they've asked us to provide them, uh, two concept plans, one for a partial northbound Maryland 97 deceleration lane. And, uh, so that one's, that one would be 350 feet. And they've also asked us to provide them with a concept plan, uh, cutting us a little bit of a break, uh, for a partial northbound Maryland 97 deceleration lane that would begin after the overhead utility pull that is about 200 feet south of the project. So at this time, a northbound acceleration lane and a southbound left turn and a southbound bypass lane are not anticipated to be required. So today, we're, we're in front of you to ask to move forward with KCI, who is our civil engineer on the project, and they're also a term contractor with us. We'd like to move forward with KCI to, to provide those concept plans for us. And with those concept plans, I'll also be providing, uh, cost estimate for the construction of that turn lane. So we'd like to move forward with KCI in the amount of $23,600.
Okay, our briefing paper says 18.6.
18.6. There was an ad alternate that was attached to that proposal for, that they added an ad alternate for the stormwater management because there's one pipe at the 350-foot length that would have to be relocated and that relocation was, would actually have to move that pipe southbound, uh, some distance, uh, on 97s to, to facilitate the proper drainage. We feel it's best at this point, we're asking for this, to have them evaluate any and everything with this turn lane. This way, we're not sitting back later on and have, you know, going to come to you for a final, or going to State Highway with a final decision with only, with a piece of information that could mean tens of thousands of dollars more to the construction cost or estimates for that turn lane. Because this is just for the evaluation of it. This does not include the money that's needed. We'll have to come to you later on, uh, whatever the final decision is. And this could be hundreds of thousands of dollars for that turn lane. I mean, it's, uh, but we don't want to exclude that further discussion with KCI and Eric and I have had. It's best to include that stormwater management at this time.
Okay, so you're adding five to that.
Wouldn't this originally going to try to find a waiver for these lanes?
Well, that's going to be later on in the, in the process is, you know, we, we've asked State Highway to see if they, we can get any participation assistance from State Highway. We've also, uh, looking to get some assistance or relief, um, from BG&E, but none of that has been determined yet. We don't have a, you know, this is the first step to figure out what, what will be impacted, uh, because we also have land acquisition that would have to happen. So we need to figure out exactly what's going to be impacted so we can go to those, uh, sources and ask to see if we can get some relief, assistance, et cetera, uh, when we get to the point of having to construct these lanes because of the high cost of it.
And, and I, and I will say, uh, where we are now as opposed to where we were before we had the meeting with them, and I want to thank my colleague Commissioner Rothstein for being in that meeting with us. We're in a better place now because the state is really working with us as best they can, even to the degree, and you touched on it, of attempting to find some funding for us that will allow, because remember, all of this is on us to, in order to, to, uh, to do what we need to do infrastructure-wise for that building to get there. So, um, so that's why, um, we are where we are, but we're in a much better place and I think Commissioner Rothstein, you would agree with that. Now, this 23.6, uh, is just coming out of the total package. Is that the way in which we decided to do this? We're not asking for any additional monies or anything out of reserves or anything. This is just to, to take this particular amount of money out of what's already been, uh, assigned to the project in order for this particular part that we didn't anticipate to be done.
Yes.
So I want to make sure you all understand that. This is not additional monies. Now, we may indeed have to come back at some point, whenever, uh, but I think we've had these discussions about our attempts, uh, coming up with a legislation, uh, in order to try to offset some of these costs that were up there, but more, more to come on that. But this is not additional money. This is, this is coming out of the total package that's already in place. We just need to specifically draw down on this particular project as a result of what the state has asked us to do because the building is going to be there.
Yes.
Anticipating in the future a little bit, they have said we're going to have to put a acceleration, de-acceleration lane in.
You want to take that one in?
Not necessarily. I mean, let me, let me preface it because I really do want to applaud, one, our team, along with Commissioner Wance and the others within the county, coming together with, uh, State Highway. State Highway Administrator Greg Slater and along with, um, John Concanon, who is our district lead from State Highway, uh, joined us the other day and we had a real good dialogue, the enthusiasm in the room to come to, uh, a, a good solution for the ingress egress. And it's neither are defined that they must be done at this point. So they're, they're looking at it right now. Uh, we, we had the maps up, we had the screenshots up. They're physically going on the ground, both State Highway and our county folks, to determine what is the best solution to, for ingress egress. And I think we've, we've come a long ways, uh, in a very short period of time. I think out of that, this study is the, is the next step. And that is to get KCI on the ground, to look at it, come back to us and then determine whether ingress egress routes are going to be necessary, which I do not believe they will be. That's my, I won't say hope, but that is the indications that I see from, uh, the discussions.
Yeah, with all due respect to the, to the, to the, to the engineers that initially looked at the project.
Right.
Um, you know, there was this anticipation of, for instance, Eric, you and I had, so we just, that there used to be a farm, a farmer's market up there when the building was there. And we put that in as part of perhaps a, a community event again. Well, that threw them into a, oh my gosh, you know, hundreds of cars going into a farmer's market. So we had, that's just an example of how we had to, to bring them back and say, okay, so that's not really what we're talking about in this rural community. We're talking about, uh, a completely different traffic count for events there. It's not like your standard Westminster City where you're, you know, you're, you're looking at a lot of...
You had a school with buses and parent drop-off for the handle fine.
Right, which is what we, we reiterated to them during this meeting, to ensure that they understand that. You know, engineers, and with all due respect to them, look at the, they, they kind of look at it like this and we wanted them to open it up and look at it, as it pertains to that particular community. Are, are there going to be times up there when there's a lot of traffic? Maybe, but not at peak hours like they were at the school. And we got that, we, I think we've got that point across.
I think we did. And I, I think it was very well received. It was not contentious, uh, from State Highway. It was an appreciation for them to now understand what our expectations are of that community up there using, um, that community center. So, uh, yeah, I, I was, I was very appreciative of them. I was very appreciative of their proactiveness. I mean, the administrator was on the phone, reaching out to folks, looking at where he can find other funds. That's pretty impressive when you've got somebody like that. That's because of the dialogue that we're having with State Highway and, uh, the engineers and the administrators, so.
So this is a requirement we have to do to get them next up?
Yeah, and, but there were, there may be some funding available, but to, to, to your answer or to your question, Dick, uh, you know, I, I will say that, uh, I suspect when this work is done, that this will be all that we'll probably need to do. I don't anticipate any, you know, giant lanes up there. As a matter of fact, when we pointed out to them that if you did something coming southbound, you'd be on the, on the front porch of the folks that live there, which I don't know that they'll appreciate, um, you know, they, they saw the, the challenges that, because of the tightness of that corridor there, but yet they were willing to say, okay, well, I think if you do this, I think you'll be fine. So to answer your question, I think what, these partial lanes or whatever we're going to do, I think will be it. Agree?
I would agree.
I want this project to move forward.
Exactly.
Wrong enough, and I, I think this is stuff.
I think they absolutely worked with us and, you know, provided us with the best-case scenario that we could, we could achieve out there.
With that, I'm going to move that the Board of County Commissioners award the transportation design engineering services to Charles Carroll Community Center to KCI Technologies in the amount of $23,600.
I'll second that.
All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, thank you. Thank you guys. You're doing a, I know it's been some challenges there, Eric, and I want to thank you specifically because it, I know you've been doing a lot of, a lot of work. I see you're down to wood crutch, which might be a positive thing. Two to one's good, right?
That's right.
Two to zero will be even better. Okay, uh, Carroll County Small Business Funding is next on our agenda. Economic Development, Mr. Lyburn. Economic Development, Mr. Lyburn.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jack.
I'm here to, to, two items. This is an exciting item because after many years, we're getting the SBDC office back in our office. The, Steve should be coming over sometime, the last, hopefully the last week in June. If we can get him over sooner, we will do that. The, what we're here today is the funding. Last couple of weeks ago, we, the budget at the Miller Center, the number was 148,830. We've been working with the college, and the college now will receive 110,000. So the motion that we need is that you give back to the funding from the Miller Center, the Cow Community College, the Department of Economic Development, 38,830. And that would be that you adopt Resolution 0.20.01. And this has been agreed upon by the college and everyone else. The, the number stays the same, the 215,000 for the office.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to let you roll with this one, Ed, because I, are you done, Jack?
You're done.
Temporarily, you're done, Jack.
Evidently, I'm done.
I'm cutting you off. Commissioner Rothstein.
I, I appreciate, Jack, you and your team, working with the Community College, the SBDC, along with those nonprofits that we also support in this, in this budget for small business. Putting it, continuing to keep it under your umbrella is significant, knowing where the resources are of the folks like SBDC, along with the funds that you and they can provide in partnership with the Community College's training programs and their resources that they have. This is a good news story for Carroll County. It's a good news story where folks, and we had these discussions, where small businesses that either exist and/or those that want to be created here in the county know where to go. And they know to go to you, to Economic Development, to get the resources and, and the commitment from you and all others within this budget to provide, to include the college and the chamber and the others. So I definitely applaud it.
So remind us again, just what, what this means. Because I know that we've talked about it briefly before, but we're actually going to relocate to here, right?
Correct, correct. The SBDC. So previously, there was a location down Main Street where SBDC had a counselor, SBDC being a Small Business Development Counselor from the SBA, along with a, an individual that was funded through us and, and the college located downtown. The intent here is to no longer have that leased space downtown, bring the counselor here under your, you know, in your office from SBA with the SBDC, bring the individual from the college back to the college, and he will have the opportunity to be using the resource of the college along with your office. And, yeah, I think it'll just add more synergy. It'll add more clarity for small businesses to know where to go, as opposed to going to three different locations. They know to come to you, and that's a good thing.
We will agree. We'll still be, our partners will be working close with the Chamber of Commerce, the Carroll Technology Council, and MAGIC will be still funding that. Well, we still have a strong relationship with Miller, you know, with Tom over at the college. We'll continue that. The good news is, as a sidebar, we have an office for him. We've been screwing around. We have almost all the furniture. We just need a desk, and we're going to purchase that today for about $1,000. But we have the tables, the chairs, and every, everything else. So we're, you know, we're kind of excited to get him over here and start this new partnership.
And, and the best part about this is, this was done with our team here, the Community College, SBA, SBDC, all in the room together, coming up with the best solution, so.
Just a couple of questions. We reduced the chamber by 2,500. They do a lot in the, I know, help promote small business in town, there's like 600-some members of that. Why?
I, I can't answer. I mean, Jack?
This is what was agreed upon at, at the college level. That can be changed, you know?
So the, so the individual amounts that are going to the six here, some of those were tweaked, tweaked a little bit, and I think that's where you're going. Why, I mean, obviously, CDC and MAGIC stayed the same, but the chamber saw a decrease.
And, and how did we use MAGIC in this?
That's a great question.
Can you explain how MAGIC comes into the small business development?
I know you're looking at me.
We, we can reduce or add, you know?
Yeah, we can, you can tweak whatever you want here.
I'm just asking.
No, and I think that a lot of that has to do with their, with their, their, what do you call it? The, the name went out of me now.
Those competition.
The Makerspace, the Makerspace.
Oh, I thought, I thought you were going someplace else.
No, I wasn't going there.
Sorry.
I'm in the same building, but not going there. But I think that's what we use, that's what we utilize, or that's what they utilize, not we, they utilize, to, to, to bring small business, the potential for a small business in there, to use, to utilize MAGIC's Makerspace, right, Ed? You're, you're more...
I believe so, but I honestly, I, I'm not going to sit, sit here and say, this is how the funds for MAGIC are being used, because I do not know.
I'm not...
Now...
I, I just question.
No, it's a good question.
Yeah.
And...
We're, we're keeping it flat from last year to this year. I am...
Except for the chamber.
Yeah, except for the chamber. If we moved, if we kept it flat from the chamber and brought it back up to 10,000, taking it from the 24.5, from...
We could do that, but I'd like to talk to Mike rather, because we're going to use that for advertising and kickoff events for our, you know, for...
Right.
So I, I'll...
So essentially, you're going to be doing some things that they used to do that you're better suited to do.
We think so. But we, we have a good partnership with Mike McMullin in the chamber. We will...
I, I, you know, they helped a lot, and a lot of...
We would agree. But we have a good work relationship that we will...
You do, and I think the county does, so.
So I, I think it's important, again, to, to state that these figures were agreed upon by all parties, correct, Jack?
Yes, yes. I mean, we could...
Unless you feel as if, I mean, I, we, we can, I mean, it's, it's up to us, so we can certainly...
You can reduce the figures if you're, if you're concerned about the 10,000 for the chamber. You know, there's, there's three areas you could reduce. You have MAGIC, Carroll Technology Council, and then you have our department.
How much time did you spend when you were working your way through this, this challenge, Ed, on the specific amounts to each of the, each of these? I mean, was there a lot of time spent or not? I mean...
No, there, there was a lot of time spent, but the, the focus of attention, I apologize, was on the college, SBDC, the Large Muscle Movements, the college, SBDC, and our office here in county government. We were not addressing, in my discussions, the three others.
We, we did not either. We didn't discuss the other three.
So my recommendation...
The other three being the chamber, CDC, and MAGIC.
Correct. So my, my recommendation is that we keep them flat from 2019, 2020, and we take 2,500 from our Economic Development Team, keep it, make it into 22,000, and gain the chamber back up to 10,000. So there's no surprises for them, okay?
Can you live with that?
That'd be fine, of course.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So the money stays the same here. It's just that you're, you're taking 22.5 from Economic Development, putting it back to the chamber to keep them at 10.
Correct.
And that gives CC, or...
2,500.
Economic Development 22,000.
Correct.
So it would be 110, 22,000, 58, 10, 75, and 75. And do you have any additional questions about the MAGIC part of this? Because if you do...
I'd just like to get an answer sometime, not right now, but in the future, I'd like to get an answer how that, what it goes for.
But we're fine. We'll work, we have a history of working with ever, whatever you give us, as you know.
That's fair. Yeah. Again, the, and I apologize not having the specifics on the three others, the Large Muscle Movements, what we were looking at, and I do believe this is overall a good news story.
The, the program is great. I think this is a move in the right direction. So don't get me wrong. And I just question where it all went.
No, and I think that's, that's a perfectly legitimate question. But I will say that I think we are better suited now, because of the fact that it's downstairs, to answer your question as opposed to before. Because before it was...
Well, the resources are here. Planning's here. Permits are here.
Right, so... So to Commissioner Weaver's inquiry, I would say to you, Jack, keep your eye on that and get back to us with some sort of a report, maybe early fall?
Well, we'll give you a quarterly, a quarterly report.
Okay, and that way you can, you can zero in on, on what you're asking, right?
Right.
Okay.
And with that, I want to move that the...
We're going to change the motion.
So, to add the two actions?
Well, just, yeah, let's just, if we could say, maybe just, maybe just the easiest thing to do is just identify the funding for each of the organizations as, as you guys have, have discussed it. Then that way it's clear, not just...
Each?
Yeah, just to, just sort of like you did just a second ago, you ran down it.
So you want to do...
That is the motion.
Okay, so the motion then, but we don't have to take each one of them. You're, you're saying it's still a total...
It's a whole motion.
Correct, one big motion that just says, I moved that we fund Miller at...
Okay, so, all right, okay.
So, in other words, moving that the Board of Commissioners agree to the following funding for FY '20. The Miller Center at Carroll Community College receiving 110,000. Carroll County Economic Development receiving 22,000. Small Business Development Center receiving 58,000. Chamber of Commerce, Carroll Technology Council, and MAGIC, all three receiving 10,000 each.
No, no.
No, no.
No, no, no.
Why?
10,000 for Carroll.
10,000 for you.
You got me. Chamber of Commerce receiving 10,000. I apologize. Carroll Technology Council and MAGIC receiving 7,500.
And the total will still be the same, 215,000.
And the total will be 215,000. I apologize.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. You good with that? Are we good?
Yeah, we'll do a second motion for the resolution. Go ahead.
Okay. Any additional? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Now...
And then adopt a Resolution 02.01, codifying that, the, all these changes.
And that's what it would do? Is that one resolution would put it all together? So just as Robert shared, that the Board of County Commissioners transfer the funding from Miller's...
I wouldn't go with that.
Adopt the resolution.
Just adopt resolution.
Okay, adopt Resolution 0TEC 20.01.
Second. Okay. When you come to a fork in the road, take it, right? All right, any other comments?
I want to thank Commissioner Rothstein's leadership on this. He's been very instrumental in making this happen. You know, small business development is critical, so thank you very much for your initiative and leadership.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The proof is in the execution, so go make it happen.
Eric said, we're going to go buy dust, and we're going to have him here as soon as we can.
Okay, thanks, Jack. All right, next is the surplus property sale. Mr. Lyburn.
The previous board, we were allowed to, they deemed 23 properties surplus, and we sold 22 of them. However, we, we worked with our attorney's office here, and we advertised this Devlin Square Eden Pond as 1.17 acres twice, and we got no bidders on the, on the parcel. The, I guess about two years ago, it's been about two years ago, the neighbor, the previous owner of this parcel put a shed. We allowed him to put a shed on our property. And when this new owner bought the house a couple of years ago, he was negotiating with us on the price. He wanted to, you know, buy the little parcel that the shed was on. He just came back to us. It's about .039 of land, and if you look at it, you have this, you, you have, you have this. It doesn't deter from us going back out. We still have a little more, a little less than an acre to sell, but he'd like to buy the .039 for 2,500. And he would pay for all the subdivision and, and work with, you know, our attorney. So I, I think it's a good deal for everyone here. It's a win-win for both of us, and we'll go back out and try to market, you know, the little less than an acre. It is R10, it's in the city, but it does not have city water and source, so it's well-inseptic. But I recommend that you, we've been working closely with Tim on this one, that you approve the sale for 2,500, this parcel, the surplus, this surplus parcel.
Just a matter of procedure here, Tim. We typically do this in another manner, correct? Or no?
Not sale of land.
Okay.
Yeah.
We do that with purchase?
Right.
Not sale? Okay. All right, okay. Just wanted to make sure. So we've been through this before. That, 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 that piece of property, it's, it's not on the, it's not, we're not putting a road in there anymore, are we?
No.
So what are we going to do with the rest of it?
There's houses on the rest of it. This is the only parcel we have left.
Oh, that's the only, this is the only piece that's left?
It's the only piece.
Okay.
No, no, I think you mean the, the, the rest of the 1.17 acres.
Yeah, like, that's what I'm...
Oh, the 1.17, we're not putting a road through it. We're going to try to sell that parcel.
Oh, you're going to try, okay. Okay, so you are going to try to sell that?
Yes, we're going to try to sell, or put it back out for the third time.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we got no bidders the other two times. And this has been, you know, we've been working with this for about two years now.
Right, okay.
And he finally stepped up and said, I want to buy it, and then I'll pay you 2,500 and I'll go ahead and do all the subdivisions, and be talking to Tim and I for years now. And Robert was involved in this too.
Done.
It's probably going to cost you more to buy it than it paid you.
Well, it's, yeah, could be. Okay.
With that, I move the Board of Commissioners approve the sale of this partial surplus land.
Second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Lyburn.
Thank you, Jack.
Why do I have in my briefing book...
I don't know. The hotel tax line?
The tourism funds and how we use those?
I have no...
Didn't we already decide that?
Yeah, but...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing something that wasn't on the agenda.
Right, no. I saw it in there, and I think it was just a mistake by...
Okay, all right, that's fine. I just wanted, didn't want to neglect something there.
Yeah, that was weird. I thought maybe it was just my book, too.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Jack. All right, request approval for purchase generator for the maintenance facility and transfer of funds. Justin's here. Chris Letnaczin, I really, man, did I murder your name earlier.
Uh-oh.
So, you know, anyway, I was giving you kudos for yesterday's event.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, that was very well done, and I know that you've gotten some positive feedback out of that, and we appreciate that, so thank you for that.
Thank you. We were, I was down on southern part of the county with the sheriff's office, working on a truck enforcement detail this morning, so I didn't get to see that, so.
Yeah, how'd that go?
It's going well.
Okay. All right, generator, Justin, how you doing?
Yeah, morning Commissioners.
Morning.
The first motion here is Facilities is requesting to transfer $71,447 from the 5307 Transit Grant to the Hazard Mitigation Grant. This is due to in-kind services that Facilities cannot support at this time for the installation of the Maintenance Center generator.
Hmm. All right, you want to layman term that for us, Justin?
Um, so, when we applied for the grant, we had a master electrician with Facilities...
Right.
Who was gonna do the in-kind installation of this work. Since then, we have an open position, and we cannot fill the installation of the generator and electrical portion of it.
Okay.
So, we're requesting these transfer of funds to support for Urban Francis to do the install of the, of the generator.
Okay, so we're getting a sub in order to do the work that we couldn't do ourselves?
Correct. Exactly.
So, you have to transfer the funds, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And then you have to approve the purchase of the generator.
Yeah, that's why you're here, Mike.
Yeah, first do the transfer, and then approve the purchase.
You're not really, you, you don't really do anything with the electrician that's coming in, you're just here for the generator. You threw me off, man, okay? All right. So, we're transferring 71,447, is that right, Justin?
Correct.
That's what it's gonna cost to put the, put the generator in, and we're getting that out of Transit Grant to Hazard Mitigation Grant, where, you want, want to explain that one, Ted? Was there money left over in that particular fund or something, or what?
No, I don't want to explain, but...
Okay, well, thanks.
Yes, there was, we had money budgeted as potential match against some buses that we did not get other funding for, so the buses didn't happen, the, the match is not needed there.
Okay.
So, it's just a way of kind of simultaneously taking care of this and cleaning up part of something that would have to be done eventually.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure everybody understood what was going on there, so, okay.
Good move.
All right. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion, I, I don't know, is there any other questions on what's happening here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll move the Board of Commissioners approve the transfer of $71,447, no sense, general fund dollars from FY '18, 5307, to Transit Grant to the Hazardous Mitigation Grant.
Second. Any other questions? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Now, isn't any point in hiring him if we don't have something for him to do, is that correct?
That's right.
So, now we're gonna do the generator.
And what size gener, thing, engine's running this?
Um, existing, we have 150 KW, and we're gonna increase that to 600 KW, so we can have the whole maintenance facility, one generator backup.
You can lay it up here for Carroll County.
What's that?
You can lay it up here for Carroll County, right?
We could.
That's a substantial increase.
Yeah, right now, the building is only partially on generator backup, and we're gonna convert that over for the whole facility for emergency operations that we run out of there, we're gonna need complete power.
Yeah, I've never understood why we didn't do that before, that was kind of crazy to me.
What size engine runs this?
Um, 600 KW, um... As in, like, horsepower?
Yeah.
I don't know, but I can get the answer, I can call CAT.
Well, I was just wondering what size engine, what kind...
I wouldn't, I, I don't know that, I'm sorry.
It's big, Commissioner Weaver.
It's big.
C18.
Yeah, but big is a term that you gotta watch what you say.
Well, I know, yeah.
It's a C18.
This room's big to some people, yeah.
A CAT C18, so it doesn't say horsepower, but...
Yeah.
Google that, quick, Google it.
What's the potential life expectancy of this generator?
Forever, I don't know.
Um, that kind of varies, it varies on runtime, how much load is on a generator during runtime, maintenance of it, you can expect 20 to 25 years.
That's good.
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we don't have to worry about seeing this again?
No, well, we don't, but somebody...
Someone else will.
I'm like...
What kind of warranty?
What kind of warranty? Um, let's see here.
Thirty feet, thirty seconds.
It's through CAT, I believe it's five-year on the engine, and one-year parts and warranty.
Wow.
That's typical for those.
Yeah, not much of a one.
Yeah.
I put a couple of those in at the, at the Valley, and...
It's 600 horsepower.
Yeah, there you go.
The engine is 600 horsepower.
I told you to Google it.
Thank you.
You're listening. If, if nothing else, I'm impressed that you're listening, Jeff.
As long as you're not talking about gravel roads.
Yeah, there you go. Wait, what?
Good work.
Uh, so, give us the details, Mike.
Yeah, so, to get maximum pricing, our best pricing, so what we're gonna do is one project, but we're gonna issue three different contracts, so we need your, you know, approval to award three different contracts, so we're buying the generator from Albin CAT off an existing contract in the amount of $120,000. We're gonna buy the switch from Capital Electric Supply in the amount of $79,987, and then we're gonna use Urban Francis for the install for $108,216.
Okay, so the 71,447 that we just did, that was part of the 108?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Any challenges with putting that out there, Chris, from a, from your perspective?
No, we're good.
Saying that's gonna light everything, what about the Fuel Island?
Absolutely.
How about the Salt Dome?
Yeah.
Everything?
Everything.
Okay, that's good.
Car wash even, too, in case you want to go out and wash your vehicles.
Good.
It's gonna take additional wiring to run this inside the switchboard?
Ah, no. The generator's gonna sit outside, we're gonna run it into a new switchboard, switch panel, no additional wires gonna be...
It's self-contained unit, I bet.
Exactly, yes.
The old one that's out there?
1982.
Yeah, I know, you're not gonna find, I mean, what do we do with that stuff?
Uh, we'll try to sell it on public purchase.
Okay, I mean, it might be somebody's...
Somebody'll come get it.
Yeah, somebody probably.
It's still functional, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Put it on your car.
All right, it's a good move, because we're, we're long overdue for making sure that that whole area's lit up out there, that's unacceptable, and we've talked about that the past couple of years.
Yes.
When this came up, so, all right, I'm gonna make the motion that we award contracts for the purchase and installation of the emergency generator at the Maintenance Center, Albin CAT, 120,000, the switchboard from Capital Electric for $79,987, and the install by Urban Francis, 108,216.
I'll second that.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's timeline on that, by the way?
Uh, 12 to 18 weeks delivery.
Okay.
So, we got some time, we're gonna work with electrician, make sure we get a game plan together.
Okay.
It's gonna happen every weekend.
Just in case the first snowstorm.
It's gonna shut down, yes.
Okay.
What'd you say? Just in time for the first snowstorm.
As long as it's before it.
Yeah, as long as it's before, not during or after.
Right, it's, come on, it's 70 degrees out, Weaver, knock it off. All right, bid approval for Fuel Island modifications. Who's up?
Morning off Thad.
Joined by Thad Highlander, our Facilities Project Manager.
Three six.
Thad, good morning.
We're in general.
You've been here a while, buddy.
At least you're not late. Not late.
Okay.
All right, so staying at the Maintenance Center, we need to do some upgrades to the Fuel Island, so what we'd like to do is piggyback off a contract, Howard County went out to bid for very similar work recently, their low bidder was Total Environmental Concepts, so we'd like to piggyback off that contract in the amount of $32,620.80.
Okay, so what are we doing out there? I mean, I see spill containment, what...
I'll go ahead and let Thad...
Yeah, we didn't have that out there before, Thad?
Everything is, is in place right now, however, it's either below grade or at grade, so every time it rains, the spillways and the manways take on water, which MDE is not very happy about that. So, we have to prevent this, or do the best we can prevent water getting these manways and spill buckets, and the way we do that is raise them a couple inches above grade.
Hmm. Gonna have to shut down the Fuel Island for a while, I guess, while we're doing this, or what, what's the story on that, Justin?
Absolutely. One side closest to the salt dome will be shut down for one week while they construct, and that's dependent on weather, and then it'll be shut for at least another week, depending on whether it's a set, concrete takes a while to set.
Yeah, okay.
So, we figured minimum two, possibly three weeks.
Okay. Much needed out there as well, can't believe that's been happening. All right, any other questions on this? I'll make the motion, we award the project to Total Environmental Concepts for the Fuel Island modifications in the amount of $32,620.80.
Second.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous as well, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners, have a great day.
You too. All right, bid approval for replacement of deteriorated water valve bolts at various, at various locations in Freedom District, sorry, Commissioner Weaver, I'm just...
Hey, they're all stout.
I'm reminded of previous...
We didn't have stainless originally?
I'm sorry.
You didn't have stainless steel bolts originally?
I'll explain more about that as we get, we missed one here. I was puzzled when I read the paper.
Okay. Andy, good morning.
Good morning. I'll let Andy do the show and tell when I'm finished here, but we have several deteriorated water valve bolts in the Freedom District area, so we went out to bid to have these replaced. Got two bids, and the lowest bidder was HTI Contractors in the amount of $46,152, so we'd like to go ahead and award the contract for them to do the replacements.
Andy?
Please background, gentlemen, uh, believe it or not, there may be as many as 1,100 valve locations out of the 43 that we have tracking right now that have non-stainless steel bolts that hold the assembly together. This is the problem that we're having, that's a non-stainless steel bolt, that's the nut on the bottom, it's absolutely sheared off. What's happening is the slightest bit of movement when we excavate, we barely touch the bolts, and they snap right off. So, what we're trying to do is, is, is take a proactive approach to move ahead and start doing these in, in mass, as opposed to waiting and react to issues that we, that we have come across in the past. So, what, what has happened is these, these were primarily installed during the 10 to 12-year building boom cycle in the mid, mid 80s to the, to the mid 90s or so. A, as the valves age, they, they obviously have, have issues associated with them, and they snap off, off without warning, and they result in, in serious water service and, and construction challenges. Complicating matters, we, we have little confidence in turning the valves that do not have non-stainless steel bolts for the obvious reasons, a, and, and as I mentioned, we are transitioning from a reactive to a proactive approach from, from this point forward. This contract will allow the, allows us to work on 21 valves throughout the Sykesville area, they're, they're basically three groups of about seven each, we think these are one of the, three of the oldest areas that, that have these issues associated with them. The average cost per location is about $2,200, it may sound like a lot of money, but involves pavement cut, the, 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 taking out of the, of the material, four bolts at each location, the backfill, the pavement patch, and traffic control for the intersection. So, there is a lot of, it's not simply just showing up and taking four bolts out, putting four back in, it's, it's pretty complicated.
What about the rest of the valve?
I'm sorry?
The rest of the valve, is that brass, or?
It's a brass body, we do test the valves while, while we're out there, the contractor has valves on, on hand, if the valve turns out to be bad, we are turning the, the valve during the bolt replacement for a process. Valves cost approximately $1,500 if they, if they are in poor shape, so we, we will make use of the contractor being on site to, to take care of that if we find other issues.
This has potential cost of a ride in it?
It, it may, it may.
The use of those bolts that we're replacing, those were the standard that were being used across Maryland, or, I mean, we're, we're in a position where we're changing something out, and...
I'm not sure, Commissioner Ralston, the, the, the current bolts do meet, do meet standards, the stainless steel bolts meet current standards.
Well, yeah, I would imagine they would, but I'm talking about the ones that we're replacing, decision had to have been made on why to use those bolts, and I would expect it would be a, a state standard or a standard to be used.
I have no idea.
Because we're paying for something that should not have been put in place, and I'm curious if the other counties in the state are finding the same thing, if we can find out from the state, are they going through a bolt replacement process across the state, which is now we're talking much, much, much more than what we're dealing with here.
I will search through some research on that, find out some information for you.
Because if there is something from the state, then maybe we can leverage the state in funds from the state, if it's a program across the state saying, hey, we've identified this, this can be catastrophic if it's not done, and they're, you know, another way of looking at other funds, so...
How much pressure's on these?
Uh, water pressure goes at about 100 PSI max or so.
So, they're just standard grade five, or not grade eight?
Yes, yes.
Interesting.
Yeah, this could be a gift that keeps on giving.
Yeah.
Which is not a good thing.
No.
It would be nice to find out if they have...
I don't know that...
Yeah, I, I don't know if the state would have a program, but I, it sounds like, you know, this could be something identified from the state, saying, hey, this is across the board, we may want to look into that.
That's what I would.
You know, I, I don't know, I don't know if other counties are going through this or not, so...
I'm wondering if initially the stainless steel bolt grading didn't meet the capacity under the pressure limits, and that a carbon steel bolt would, that might have been what caused this, and make sure that whatever bolts we get in stainless meet the grade standard for the pressure.
Mm-hmm.
That's something we see a lot in my industry.
Okay.
Yeah, don't go putting stainless steel bolts in there that don't meet the grade requirements of the universal standard, because then we can have valves busting open.
So, now the question is the timing of this, is it necessary to fund this now, or doing some of the homework to see if there's other, you know, if the, if the state does, has identified this?
What I would like to do is move forward with, with, with the known problem there is, for example, we had a problem last summer on Piney, Piney, Piney Ridge Boulevard Road near, near, near 26.
Yep.
We tried to, we had a water main break, and we tried to turn three valves off, each of the three valves.
And it snapped, yeah.
Could, could we find the answer out, I think, before we act on this? Is a week gonna make...
We have a sizable capital project in place for this program, I would, I would really like to move forward with these 21, and also do, do, do the research to, to answer those questions as well, while we're moving ahead with this, if at all possible.
Jeff?
Yeah, um, thank you. A lot of the work that you're gonna be looking at, these valve replacements, are gonna take
A lot of the work that you're going to be looking at, these valve replacements, are going to take a lot of time. It's not like we're going to be in and out in two weeks.
Right.
This is going to be over the next year plus, you know, and depending on where the valves are located. I think we, as Andy stated, I think we get some of the, continue to work on some of these projects. Getting some, starting to get them replaced, track all the documentation, track photographs, et cetera. In case there's a reimbursement. And this could also come down to a simple case later on of, at the time that was, you can buy valve A for X dollars and valve B a little cheaper, but it's a valve and met the specifications at the time. That might have been purchased. It might have been a financial, you know, it might have been a financial move at the time to go for cheapest.
Could have been just the way it was too and no one thought about it.
Right. And over time, we've seen that with many things over.
The lowest bidder.
Yeah, I'm not in the mindset of holding the project up because until you get done going through all the bureaucracy that we see with all this stuff, we could be months delayed. I don't think that's a good idea.
I agree with you.
A week to find out all the details in there.
Well, I'd like to think that our staff already has a handle on that a little bit.
And it is a lot of money, but in the time you wait for these answers, you'll get one or two failures and it'll dwarf that amount. You give an extra fee.
It's going to come to a vote anyway, but I'm just not, I'd like you to look at the potential of perhaps some reimbursement if it's there. But I don't really want to hold up the project. I think we need to roll. That's just my opinion.
When I come for you again for the next types, type of this contract, I'll try and have an update of some sorts.
Yeah, it's a valid inquiry, so I, you know. I mean, I'm going to make the motion that we award a contract for the replacement of deteriorated water valve bolts at various locations in Freedom to HTI for forty-six one fifty-two.
I'll second.
All right, let's see how this goes. Any other questions?
Yeah. Because I'm with Commissioner Weaver. I'm just not comfortable aligning forty-six thousand dollars for a blanket project for various locations where if it's two thousand dollars, you're fixing a problem that's at hand. Got it. But there's still some questions out there on where other funding could come from. And I think we need to do that work first before we're giving a blank contract like this.
Just to let you know, the work that we did with our contractors, we invited the contractors out to these sites. They have seen these with their eyes. We're just not picking the areas out. And there are, the average cost of twenty-two hundred involves a wide variety of site locations, site conditions. So some of these may cost as low as a thousand or so, but others are more complicated and may cost three to four thousand.
Have there been, how many sites have been identified in the Freedom District that need replacements right now?
Well, long term, we estimate approximately one thousand one hundred valves may have this issue. We've identified these twenty-one as some of the worst areas right now.
The forty-six one fifty-two, is that in, that's already in the budget, right?
Yes, it is.
It's not extra stuff?
It's part of the capital account.
Part of the capital. Jeff, do you want to add something?
I just wanted to add, the estimations that Andy has given about the eleven hundred, it may be plus or minus a few. Our asset management system, what we do is part, you know, we put this information into our asset management system and it identifies and can characterize valves that were constructed. And that's how, you know, he knows where from like a ten-year period of mid-eighties to mid-nineties to know that we've, from the failures we've had over the last multiple years, that we've got to go on an emergency basis to do replacements. They look at those and say, well, you know, why are these failing other than other valves? They go back, figure out the bolts. They look at it saying, well, some of these, you know, they narrowed it down to like a ten-year span of time. Been able to put back into the asset management program to ask it, tell us all the valves are constructed within this timeframe. That's how they've been able to narrow it down to eleven hundred based off the information that they have of the twenty-one they've inspected plus failures we've had over the last few years. So that was, you know, that's kind of the asset management system working for you is giving you the advantage of narrowing down timeframe and issues we have. Because we've seen that before with pipe manufacturers where there were some pipes that were constructed in the late seventies for like a two-year span. Had metallurgy of it was incorrect when they mixed it. They found all pipe within a two-year span was actually, you know, subject to early failure. We've been able to narrow that down also to make sure that we didn't have any of those luckily in our system. But many other places across the country running into that in the system.
No, and I appreciate, I think my biggest concern is that we're putting a finger in the dike. And forty-six thousand dollars is going to close up that little hole. But the potential of it being a much greater hole in that dike, I mean, we've got a problem. And if we don't identify the funding that potentially could be out there, it's going to cost us a whole lot more than the forty-six thousand. So this, right now, that's what we're doing. You've identified the problem. You're putting your finger in the dike. You want to fix twenty-one locations, but there's a potential of it being much greater.
Yes, sir.
That's, so all's I asking, and I agree with this now in understanding this, but I ask that you look for, to the state and have that conversation with them. Is this a systemic issue across the state? And maybe we can identify state funding as well. Because this seems to be, you know, something that can grow very quickly, you know, as an issue, so, okay.
All right, any other comments on this? Got a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That an aye? Unanimous. Okay. All right, that's that one. Award of alternate items for the Hampstead wastewater treatment plant upgrade project.
So we are currently under contract with Conawago Enterprises to do the Hampstead wastewater treatment plant ENR upgrade. That project's well underway. When we did the bid, one of the add alternate items, it wasn't part of the base bid, but was an alternate item, was in the amount of one million eight hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and four dollars and fifty-four cents. What we'd like to do today is go ahead and award that add alternate item added to the contract and have this work done.
So what's the alternate? What are we adding here?
All right, what the add alternate is for, it's for three major components. It's for sand filters, ultraviolet disinfection, and improvements to our sludge system. And the main reason these were pulled out of the primary contract was these were not part of the MBE, the NR grant funding reimbursement program. So these would be paid for by the county outside of the grant funded program. As far as the funding stream, the primary bid was, funding was in place for that with the FY nineteen budget. The add alternate was always planned to be funded as part of the FY twenty cash flow process. So during the pre-bid meeting with the contractors, we did make it very clear that we would award the primary bid last year and not the add alternate. So there's nothing astounding or alarming about this. It was part of the overall process. We, the.
You just took that out of the mix for the grant process, that's all.
More or less.
With every intent of putting it back in in order to complete the project as a whole.
Yes. It just makes the cash flow stream a lot cleaner. These components are part of a very aging plant, as you just saw with your site visit after, Commissioner Weaver. They are definitely needed to meet the MBE affluent and permitting requirements. They were always part of the overall plant rehab process.
So we're not taking monies from anywhere else that is already in the project?
That's correct.
And slated for the FY twenty budget process?
That's correct.
Are we doing the latest and greatest with sand filters?
Yes. Yes.
Does that sound to me a little bit antiquated, but maybe it's not in this instance?
Yeah, sand filters are a very crucial part of the treatment stream. And what they do is they're the last step that takes out the fines of the solids that are part of the wastewater effluent stream prior to discharge into our receiving stream. Very, very critical part of the process.
It seems to me they'd come up with something other than sand.
Sand's organic there, right?
Well, yeah, I guess I'm looking at my previous swimming pool career and that sand filter thing's way going from there. They now have other technology that clears up pool water in a day. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, well, it's part of the overall process and they are back washed through quite frequently during the end day. So it's an ongoing cleansing process.
This isn't exactly pool water flooding.
Well, I understand. Well, I got that.
He's not drinking.
And if it was, everybody'd be out of the pool, right? So there's that. But I do know, there's a movie about that. Remember that movie? Anyway. Yeah, okay. Do we change, the sand's got to be changed, I'm sure too, from time to time.
I'm sure it does. I don't know.
So guys do that or, okay, all right. Okay, seems like a lot of money, but if it was in the project anyway, it's not like it's unusual. This is not an add on. If you were coming here with add, I'd be like, wait, what?
Guaranteed, the water comes out of this is going to be able to be totally able to drink down the line, right?
Close. Close.
Now, wait a minute, it's close now?
Big coffee.
I would agree.
Jeff guaranteed me a couple of years ago it was going to be.
Closer.
Yes, closer.
All right, I move the Board of Commissioners' order, change order to the contract for the Hampstead wastewater treatment plant ENR upgrade project for the add alternate items to Conawingo Enterprises in the amount of one million eight hundred and forty-three dollars, four hundred and four, no, eight hundred and forty-three, four hundred and four dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second.
All right.
Fifty-four cents?
Price of sand. This is two grains of sand.
Couldn't negotiate that out.
All right, got a motion and second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay. Freedom wastewater treatment plant upgrade.
What we are, what I'm here for you today is for a fund transfer to cover a negative balance in the account for the Freedom wastewater treatment plant project. This project was also in the ENR upgrade for the large Freedom Treatment Plant. It began in twenty fifteen and was completed in early twenty eighteen. As you may, as you likely know, the state of Maryland owns the Freedom wastewater treatment plant and it's operated by the Maryland Environmental Service. So as part of the original agreement with MES, the county was responsible for about seventy-four percent of the operation of the anticipated construction costs. As construction began, there were a series of change orders that took place. So a series of seventeen change orders. And the end result was the project was, cost overruns came into place of approximately seventy thousand dollars. MES is in the process right now of trying to recoup some of those overages from the contractor, nor error. There's construction quality issues. There's time constraint issues. There is a very good chance that we may recoup some of this cost overage in terms of reimbursement from the contractor. So we aren't, there is that to fall back on. At this point, we're asking that small balances left in two finalized capital accounts be transferred to cover some of this cost at relief sewer number two and four. Those total, that totals about eight thousand dollars. And the initial funding would come out of what we call the relief sewer number six contract. That's for revamping a sewer main that runs from the Hodges Road area down to the Freedom Treatment Plant. We don't have any construction planned for that in the very near future. And our hope is that with the reimbursement of funding from MES and the contractor, these funds will be transferred back into that account when construction is planned for that one.
Okay.
The Hodges, that's also where the salt mine is, the salt?
That's correct.
Okay. Not salt mine, but the salt dome.
Roads in my borough should are combined site though.
Okay. Expectation of recouping that seventy thousand?
I've been assured by MES that it's very good chance of some of it, maybe not the entire amount, but they have a strong case.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that the Board of Commissioners approve a budget transfer request in the amount of seventy thousand dollars to CIP six four one nine, Freedom Wastewater Treatment Plant ENR Upgrade from CIP six three seven four. Relief Sewer Number Two, CIP six three seven six. Relief Sewer Number Four and CIP six three seven eight, Relief Sewer Number Six.
Second.
Do you repeat that?
Okay.
Glad you read that one well.
Was that, that's clear as mud, right? Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Drainage and paving improvements to the Edgewood Pumping Station.
So the county needs a contractor to do the drainage and paving improvements at the Edgewood Pumping Station. So we went out to bid. We received four bids and MT Laney was the low bidder in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and no cents.
Background for this project is the pump station was constructed in nineteen ninety-four. The driveway is approximately eight hundred feet long. It's made out of hot mix asphalt. It's in very poor condition. It's cracking, many potholes. There's also a major drainage issue right now. So the work will include the complete removal of the asphalt driveway, brand new asphalt being placed as well as some drainage improvements being made. And this project was planned as part of the FY nineteen budget process.
Okay.
Why do you think the disparity in bids? It's either this level or twice the amount.
Again, we invited, we had a site meeting with all four contractors. All four were given the same information. We all, we walked the site with them. These were how they returned their bids. I guess some wanted the work more than others did.
And Laney's got access to good pricing on asphalt, so that gave them a little bit of a leg up.
Good question, Andy. I mean, it is quite a disparity there, isn't it?
Yeah, they just bought up the asphalt plant down on Woods Mill Route.
Okay.
Now, if the Laney bid was alone by itself without the HTI bid, I would have some other questions to raise, but.
Okay.
Before we move forward, in disclosure, I'd like to state that my corporation does business with MT Laney and they were a campaign supporter. So I'm going to abstain from voting on this.
Where is the Edgewood Pumping Station?
In the Edgewood community?
Come on, Andy.
No, it's off twenty-six.
For the senior commissioners, I've only been here for a year in this bureau, so I'm still learning these roads myself.
Rock away from Wesley Freedom. It's on the right side.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Got it. Okay. All right. All right, well, I'm going to make the motion to award a contract for drainage and paving improvements to Edgewood Pumping Station to MT Laney in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's three and one abstentions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nicely done.
That's where the Edgewood community is, I'll put it that way.
Okay, yeah, well, it makes sense that it's there, right? All right, we did all that and now we're going to buy a truck. New four-wheel drive service truck with crane and Keith's here, our Bureau Chief of Fleet.
That's a serious truck.
Well, it's got a crane.
Yeah, they're serious trucks.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Good morning or afternoon?
Afternoon.
Good afternoon. So we went out to bid for a new four-wheel drive service truck with a crane. This is a replacement truck that will be used by fleet management for road service on county vehicles and equipments. We did receive three bids. We're asking for your concurrence to award to Bob Fisher Chevrolet in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, no cents. This amount is within the budget and no additional funds will be necessary.
What size truck?
It's going to be a Chevy Silverado sixty-five hundred. It'll have a Napa Hyde mechanic service body on it with torches, a welder, generator, an air compressor and a crane.
Oh, fully ready to go.
Yes.
That's what I said, it's a serious truck.
Yeah, it is.
I take it the price tag is for the exact truck, just three different vendors?
No, it's all one package from, I think, Bob Fisher Chevrolet. They supply the chassis and then they get the body and do the outfit and everything, so one hundred and thirty-eight will be a total.
Yeah, but from the other two bids, the one forty-six one fifty-eight, it was the same, it's the exact same truck, same?
Yes, correct. Sorry, I didn't understand your question.
No, no, it's okay. Okay.
Probably got that, well, that's probably off some kind of a bid that other folks are on too, right, Tina? Is that right? I guess, right, Mike?
No, this is one we did.
Oh, is this what, this is flat out ours?
And what's it replace?
Excuse me?
What is this going to replace?
This is going to replace a two thousand eight Ford F-five fifty service truck.
How many miles it have on it?
It has seventy-nine thousand eight miles, but it has four thousand nine hundred and twenty-five hours. When you multiply that out by forty miles an hour, it technically has a hundred and ninety-seven thousand miles on it.
Time for new.
Well, not necessarily. Four hundred thousand for a heavy-duty truck, right?
This, our current truck is also a little underweight for what we're carrying. Our GBWR is seventeen nine fifty. When we last weighed it with everything we need, we were at twenty thousand three hundred pounds.
Yeah, that's not good.
So the new truck will be twenty-two thousand pounds, so it should serve us much better.
Now, is this a replacement or a supplement? Are we still able to use the truck that's, that you said is going to be replaced, but it'll still be able to be used?
We're currently using it. When the new one comes in, we will be selling it at public cost.
We'll be selling it. Okay, got it. Okay.
Only need one, you're going to sell it.
Good deal.
Okay. All right, any other questions on this?
I'd state for clarification for people watching, these are not trucks you can just go to the dealership and pull off the lot. Dealers get the chassis and they have to outsource to contractors and outfitters to pull together the specific package that you're looking for. And that would explain some of the variation, some of the bids.
Correct.
All right. With that, we need a motion.
I move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract for a new four-wheel drive service truck with a crane to Bob Fisher Chevrolet in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. And I think I've got ESP as to why you walked back up here, Mike.
Yeah, Alberta called me. I was so anxious to get out of here, I ran off without introducing Tina Rucker. She's our new buyer. I know I introduced her a while back, but it's been a while and this is actually her first formal action in front of the commissioner. So that's Tina with the Bureau of Purchasing. We've seen a lot of her lately. We're really happy to have her. She's done a great job.
Excellent. Welcome aboard, Tina. Thank you.
And good job.
Ooh, first purchase went well.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. For open admin, I need to get a motion to adopt the minutes of the Board of Health meeting. And I think that's all in your books and hopefully you read each and every word because there's a test. I guess they did. I don't know. Anyway, we need to approve these minutes from the Board of Health.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Health as written.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Besides agendas, anything else for open admin?
Not for me.
Anybody? Somebody? Anybody? Ms. Hoover? All right, the week of June seventeenth, nine AM on Tuesday is planning and zoning. And at two PM is the Veterans Advisory Meeting with Commissioner Weaver. Wednesday, the nineteenth, is the Carroll Community College Board Meeting. That will be Commissioner Fraser at six PM. On Thursday, the twentieth, we have open session to include grant awards. On Thursday, the twentieth, we have open session to include grant award for the state's attorney, work order in asset management software, Public Works, facility condition assessment, Public Works, software purchase, Roberts Mill Stormwater retrofit and bridge superstructure, submit application and award for Level One Screen Funding, Department of Citizen Services, and nursing facility program education matching funding for a grant awarded there. And that's it for that.
I just added two additional items from Department of Public Safety as well.
Okay, so there'll be two other items from Public Safety. I will be absent due to being at most of the week with the Maryland State Fire Association and then on that Thursday, I'll also be absent. I'll be with Mako on Thursday and Friday. Economic Alliance for Greater Baltimore is on that Friday, that's Commissioner Ross.
Thursday.
I'm sorry, Thursday, Commissioner Rothstein at two-thirty and the Maryland Tech Council, Summer Sizzler, interesting, five PM in Baltimore, Commissioner Rothstein. I would be, I'd like to have a little detail on that. Anyway, and Commissioner Rothstein has the Commissioner's Report for that week. All right, the week of June the twenty-fourth, Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, is breakfast with Weaver.
All right. At the North Carroll.
And the only person that's going is gonna be Frazier. Weaver's not gonna be there, but it's breakfast with Weaver. No, you're gonna be there.
North Carroll Library.
That's at eight AM at North Carroll Library. Two-thirty PM is Maryland Public Television Proclamation Presentation, myself and Commissioner Rothstein. Just a point about that, it's interesting that MPT in Owings Mills does a ton of recording here, especially with our farming community. I know several farms have been on that channel, Dick, and they also do a lot of things here in the county. So we're gonna honor them with a proclamation because it's their birthday, so we're gonna go down there and do that. At four-thirty PM is Carroll County Public Library Westminster Branch Exploration Commons Groundbreaking, and that's Commissioner Frazier and Rothstein. And add me to that, I'm also gonna try to get to that as well. Thursday, the twenty-seventh, we have open session. We're gonna talk about dog parks, road and storm drains, extension of term contract for professional land surveying services and impact fees. Probably be some things added to that as well, I'm sure. At seven PM that evening is a charter government question and answer session with Commissioners Boucher and Frazier. I have the Commissioner's Report on the thirtieth and Commissioner Rothstein on Sunday at three PM has Let Freedom Ring Parade, and you're a judge.
I'm a judge.
That's in Sykesville at three PM.
That's in Sykesville, in the Freedom District.
Any other items for agenda? All right, if not with that, I'll entertain a motion to Gwenda, closed for land acquisition.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And after that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Maybe we adjourn after closed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Safe weekend, everyone.